City Council Work Session Number 20-17 to order. Cindy Roelke, please.
Councilmember Cope. Councilmember Cope?
I'm here, sorry. I was on the wrong screen.
That's okay. Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Here.
Want to just read the COVID-19 statement due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with Governor Reynolds' March 19 to 2020 proclamation suspending the regulatory provisions of Iowa Code Section 21.8 or any other statute imposing a requirement to hold a public meeting or hearing. The City of Johnson will conduct meetings electronically with the public allowed to attend per instructions denoted on the meeting's particular agenda. Meeting minutes will continue to be posted per the city's normal course of business. Moving on to the discussion items. For A, discuss the town center logo. And I'm assuming that's probably Adam.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. The committee, the Town Center amenities committee met following the last work session and discussed some revisions to the town center logo. After a little bit of discussion, it was said to try to limit it just to that symbol and not looking at kind of the overall patch logo or the kind of fonts that are out there in the established 2020. What you see here is the recommended logo change from Juice Box. It was emailed out to the committee for comments. Last week, it's intended to reflect a little bit of the the tree that's in the City of Johnston logo in more of a plant shape. But it's also, as you can read under the Juice Box, description intended to kind of allow you to use your imagination and beauties. A few other things as well. The committee did look at putting the J in the center or incorporating some leaves into the existing logo. But ultimately, this is what Juice Box recommended. And I'll open it up to the committee to provide their feedback on what they think of this and the overall council opinion as well.
Council? Thoughts?
I think they heard what we were saying and did a nice job.
Yeah, I like it, too.
I like it better than the other one, so I'm in favor.
I like it. I like it a lot. I was waiting for the committee to tell us what to think, but yeah, it's good. I think it looks like, I like it's, it's, it could be a sporting ball there in the middle or it could be like a corn thing. I mean, I think it's really cool.
Great to hear. If that's kind of unanimous approval, then we'll kind of get back to work on the monument signage and kind of reconsider how that might fit into those pieces as well as the wall sign that's intended to be between the concession stand and the restrooms there.
Okay. I appreciate the, the, the staff and Juice Box and all the folks involved for kind of going back to the drawing board and I think, and coming up with this, I think it was good. And so I appreciate that very much.
If there's nothing more on that, let's move on to discussion item for B. Discuss upcoming meeting format and considerations, virtual or in person.
Yes, after our last city council meeting, when we talked about how we wanted to conduct our September council meetings, we had, we decided that this meeting would be virtual and, and wanted to get some direction from a group of committees, subcommittee of council members to talk about this. And so Councilmember Cope and Councilmember Ready, along with the mayor, met with staff to talk about how we may want to manage our, our upcoming meetings. One thing that we decided against was using any type of hybrid approach. For example, for example, having some live and some via Zoom or some other method because just the logistics of trying to get that to happen and make it all work. And so we definitely decided against that. The conversation that we had, we also planned on the two September meetings, the 8th and the 21st, to be conducted via Zoom. So our two meetings this month will be that way. We are planning, the group is planning on getting together after the second meeting of the month and talk about what our next meetings would, would look like going out ahead. And so, so there will be a continual dialogue, monitoring what's happening with COVID and particularly COVID in our area and determine when we may go back to having in-person meetings. By the, by the time we get to October, November timeframe, we will be probably by November certainly into our, our new building. So, you know, we would have much different capabilities as far as, you know, how we record and, and share our meetings with, with our public. So that, that'll change. It'll be much different than we have now. We're also looking, having our architect design team look at the layout of the new chamber to make sure that if we do conduct meetings there, that when we do conduct, conduct meetings there, that we have it set up as safe as possible with social distancing and all the other requirements that we normally have. Cindy's bringing up a document that shows what social distancing looks like in new building. The, the green circles, meaning it's a circle around what a six feet would look like. And, and, and you can see that here. We would have to not have as many people at the council dais that has room for the mayor and city council. So the city attorney and myself would be sitting elsewhere related to the meetings. As you can see, we've included other spaces in city hall where, for example, city staff could sit, depending on how much of an audience we have, and, and leave room for any audience and still allow for the social distancing, but staff can be in other areas of the building and when time comes for them to present or answer any questions, then they can participate in the meeting in person with that. So, so this gives you an idea of how we social distance in our, in our new building and the areas that would be available to have that happen. Then, then why, the other thing we talked about is what metric are we going to use as far as when we return to in-person meetings? And it was suggested that we use the hospitalization data and, you know, which is readily available to us. It gives us a clear picture of how many people specifically in Polk County are impacted or dealing with COVID at that point in time. The only thing we didn't really get to is what is that magic number? I mean, what are we looking for? Certainly, we can look at trends, whether the things are trending up or trending down to determine that. But we didn't really talk about, you know, if we get X number of hospitalizations, is that when we implement, you know, doing, or when we implement or not implement or on our personal meeting, meetings in person? So, so anyway, this was the direction that the group came up with. And just as, as you guys are aware, I mean, this changes very quite often as far as where we are with COVID. And, and so this allows us the flexibility to take a look each month at where we are and make that determination, what's the safest way to meet for our council and staff and the public that, that would want to attend the meeting? So with that, I'd answer any questions anybody may have?
So, Jim, this is Rash. The chart that Cindy put up, you just mentioned about staff sitting in other rooms. How about the audience of the public, they're sitting in same room or different rooms?
Well, you can see, yeah, the, the bottom of that shows the council dais, which is six positions, which is the mayor and city council. And, you know, depending on the number of people that would attend, the green circles would be people that can attend and still maintain social distancing live at the meeting. So we are limited in the number of public that could attend. But for example, if, if not many public show up, staff could also be in the same room as well and still maintain social distancing. So this just gives you an idea, those circles are all six feet around. And what we would intend to do is have the city council chambers for the public set up with those distances where the chairs are. And, and again, staff, you know, would, would be in the building. What this shows is if you look at the right side of that, the red try, or rectangles there, that is where staff tables would be. And, and so we show typically, we're planning on having two staff at each table. Under this scenario, we'd only have one staff at each table. And then we have the ability within, for example, our training room, which is to the, to the right of that picture. We have plenty of room in there for our staff to socially distance. But then also they can watch on the monitor that the city council meeting and, and know when they need to come in and talk about an issue or make a presentation to the council.
Okay. So is there a determination of how many people can be in that conference room, the council chambers?
What's that?
How many people can be sitting in the council chamber?
Well, what do we have?
And it really, I mean, if you, if you come with your family of four, right, then your social distancing is different. I mean, this is single, this takes into account six feet for each person. So really, the makeup of the crowd would kind of dictate how many.
So it looks like we'd have room for 17 people in the audience and one person addressing the council, which would anticipate that person would sit down. So it looks like about 17 or 18 people that can physically get into the, the public area of the council chambers and, and participate in the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
But Jim, you, you, you mentioned, Cindy, can you pull up the, the, the map again of the new setup?
Maybe, yeah, just.
It looks like, so Jim, you and, and the city attorney would be permanently in the room at one of the tables along the far side, right?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we haven't determined exactly, but certainly that, that we would probably.
And I guess, because a couple of times you, when you've, I think it's important that you both be in the room at the same, at that time. And so when you say it, it kind of is a little unclear if you, if that's your vision or not. But I, I would expect, I mean, from my perspective that, and so I see, I see like, it looks like it says maybe city attorney and city administrator over there on the, on the left. And so, I mean, I think that's important from, from my perspective that you both be in the room, so.
And you can see a little bit clearer on the, where the red circles are on the left. That shows what the design of the room is, is two people sitting at a table. But you can see that green circle in there, which would be one person. So it looks like we would probably along the table have up to six staff in the room. But certainly, myself and the city attorney can, can make sure we're there. And probably would, probably would make sense to have Cindy in the room as well.
Dang it.
Is there a way to do, I don't know, but I'm just asking. Is there a way to do it where like, you know, if we were all there? Because I think probably the, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, other people, but the biggest sticking point for people is probably just how we accommodate the public, the audience. Is there a world in which just staff and council members would be in person? And then the public is still able to participate by live stream or, you know, calling in that way? Because then that kind of eliminates that concern. I don't know if that's possible, though.
Yeah, our, our plan, Scott, is when we move into the new building, we will be live streaming. So people could participate or at least view the meeting from home, not have to come in. The only cumbersome, clunky kind of part of that is it's not like Zoom where I can just conference you in and you can talk. So really, the only way the audience would participate would be via a chat feature. So, you know, while the live stream is playing and you had a question, you could chat with me and I could see it and then ask it, but there wouldn't be live audience participation, if that makes sense.
Got it, yeah. No, that does make sense.
We talked to the AV vendor for the new building just to see if there was some way, you know, that we could do kind of the hybrid thing. And really, the only way to do that would be to maybe utilize one of the conference rooms that's set up for room conferencing. And so you would all be in the same room. And then the, and then, you know, the public could participate via Zoom or something like that. But in the actual council chambers, no, there's not that hybrid option.
Got it, okay. Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah. Okay, yeah, I don't know how you'd solve for that.
Other questions or comments?
Yes, this is Councilmember Cope. So, I mean, you, you still have, it sounds like, so you would have the ability to have 15 to 17 people in the room. And if people wanted to come to the council meeting, they could still attend in person if they wished even above that 15 or 17, but they would be set up in another room. And if you just wanted to monitor what was happening at a council meeting, you could do that via live stream. Is that right, Cindy?
That is correct, yes. And, and remember too, we, we have it set up in our, the current scheme that you can view what's happening in the council chambers from outside of the council chambers, like in the lobby area or, you know, those kind of things. We, we have it set up so it will show on those TV monitors that are there, but we will also be live.
And even a 15 to 17 number is probably an understatement of how many people could actually fit in the chambers. Because if you have people from the same household, they can sit closer together. And so you, you would probably have more like 25 to 30 people potentially, correct?
Right, I mean, it just would, it would come down to, you know, how they were situated.
Yeah, I mean, I guess from my perspective, that would seem to, that would likely accommodate almost every council meeting that I participated in and over the last eight and a half years.
I have a question. And I apologize if you've already said this, but once they're in the council room, are they, are we, are we highly recommending or requiring masks?
Well, we currently, in this building, we currently require masks. We have a sign on the door that said masks, that says masks are required. That being said, if someone comes in not wearing a mask, we're not going to, to help them. We do offer them masks. We have masks available at the counters if they choose. And I can't speak to how many times that occurs. We don't have a ton of foot traffic happening at this time. So, you know, I'm not sure that's a good gauge, anyway.
So we could have 17 or 18 or whatever the number was, people in the audience not wearing masks.
Correct, with that social, that's six foot social distance, correct?
I don't know. It's gonna, it's gonna be, and then at the council table, you know, I must, it's gonna be awkward to be taking on and off a mask and you're not moving around. I don't know. It seems, it seems awkward. I'm just saying, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that it's not a bad, good plan or anything. I'm just trying to visualize how this is gonna work.
And, and at least for the dais, Councilmember Martin, you guys are six feet apart. So, and all facing, you know, mostly the same direction. So it's not like you're face to face, you know, which is helpful. So, again, masks are required in the building, but, you know, I can, we don't force anyone to do it, so.
And you're still gonna talk about this Plexiglas partitions between us? Yeah.
I, I don't know that the architect weighed in on that. We can reach back out and see if he has a, if he has a plan. I'm not sure how that would work on the dais. I haven't seen what it looks like. So I can't visualize how we would set it up, but you may have some, some feedback on that.
I chatted with him briefly. He hasn't looked at it in too much depth. But we started with this concept just to see how many, how many folks we could sort of get in the room with social distancing. And if there's other things we want him to explore, we can, we'll certainly ask that question.
I, I guess I would just add that I'm not aware of, most places that I go in an indoor setting, if you're in a room with 18 to 20 people, I've yet to be in a setting where all 18 to 20 people are not wearing masks. In fact, most of the settings I've been in and that are in an indoor setting at this point, at least 50% of the people are wearing masks, if not higher. I mean, if you go to the grocery store, if you go to other indoor venues, I, the, I, the idea that nobody would be wearing a mask, I, I don't really think is very likely.
Okay. And this is why we have this group, this meeting on a monthly basis, reviewing these kinds of issues and bringing them back to the council. So the conversation will continue.
And just one more point, too. The current proclamation that allows us to have electronic meetings will expire in September. If the governor doesn't extend it, then that changes the conversation as well.
One more thing, too, I was just thinking about of, I mean, this is just for the committee discussion. I don't need an answer right now. But we should probably think about how we deal with the, you know, sometimes we'll be like, hey, Johnston, you know, boys basketball, you won the state championship. Come in, like, we should think about how we're doing that if, because obviously that would bring, you know, 30 to 50 people all at once. So that might need to be tweaked, whatever that process ends up being.
We'll be standing outside in March, having that celebration.
I, it's, I think that's a good point, Scott, and we haven't thought about that. And maybe we'll just have to hold off on some of those for a little while.
I know that one of the other communities, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't recall right off the top of my head, but what they were doing is if, for example, they had a, a discussion that might involve a neighborhood that would have several people there, were showing they could be up to, you know, 18 people. And, and say there's another issue that there's other people there. They've been shuffling the groups in so that they have no more than whatever, you know, maximum that we've set. So, for example, if, if we're, you know, talking about something with the chamber and there's several chamber members there, they might wait in the hallway while we're, while, while we're meeting with another group. And then once we get that issue talked through with that other group, the group would leave and then another group would come in. That's, that's a little awkward as well, but it's just a way to sort of manage it if we know that we're gonna have some representatives, you know, multiple representatives from a, on a particular issue. So, and we can talk with those groups ahead of time to talk about, you know, how we, how we're gonna try to manage that. But, but I know, and, you know, one community was, was trying to manage it that way when they had multiple issues where they might have a number of people represented at, at the meeting.
Anything else on this item?
I was just gonna say thank you to all the staff and council members that have been clearly putting some thought into this, so it's appreciated.
Well, we're still feeling our way through it, and we will be for some time, so. Try and get it right. Anything else? So our next agenda item is a closed session. But before we go into the closed session, we need a motion to do so.
Mayor?
Yeah.
If I might suggest, I know we've done this in the past, maybe we could cover some of the staff comments now. The closed session shouldn't last more than 15 or 20 minutes or so. And we have some time now that we can maybe cover some of that stuff.
Let's start.
You know, because we got through, we got through these two issues fairly quickly. So, you know, I thought that might be a good thing to do. So let's go ahead and just talk about some things we were gonna talk about that aren't on the agenda for action items. First thing I want to mention is there's been quite a bit of chatter among the city managers as far as what we're gonna do about beggars night, which is coming up for Johnston. It's October 30th. Varies between metro communities, whether it's October 30th or, or October 31st. But there is, you know, everybody is sort of wondering what we should do and whether it should be canceled. And, and I know it's an individual city's choice whether they have it or not. But the other part of that conversation, is there a way we can do it that would be, you know, mindful of, of the health conditions that we're dealing with right now? And, and so there's been a lot of conversation of, you know, rather than having kids that go out trick or treating, coming up to the, to the doors, you know, maybe people put their candy out on a chair, maybe in their driveway. And if you want to hear the, the children's jokes, you can sit six feet away and ask them to, to do their, their trick to get their treat, that kind of thing. So, so there's been those types of conversations and we're listening, we're monitoring that, we're participating in those conversations. But the other thing that came out today is, you know, nobody knows what, where exactly we're gonna be in the next six or seven weeks. And so that creates some challenges as well. Obviously, if we're in a worse condition as far as Polk County in the metro area, then, you know, maybe canceling trick or treat makes sense. If things have gotten improved, you know, maybe it's something that we can put some good, strong suggestions together and continue to have that. The, but right now, really, the, the, the people are thinking, let's give a couple more weeks here. The schools have started back up, and I think we'll get a good flavor for how that's gonna impact the students and teachers and everybody involved with the school district and, and see where we are. So the suggestion right now is, you know, to have a little bit of a wait and see. But I think if we're considering this, we need to think about how we do it in a, in a responsible way. So what I was thinking about doing is we will, staff will work on some recommended safety ideas that the city council consider, and maybe we can have it as part of our next work session just to talk through that, not at this point to make a decision whether we're gonna have trick or treat or not. Or I guess if the council feels strongly that we shouldn't have it or should have it, we can make that decision sooner than later. But, but I just want you to be aware, everybody's talking about it right now. My, my colleagues and other people around the metro area, and, and everybody's mindful of, if we do something, we want it to be as safe as possible and, and, you know, make sure we follow all, all guidelines that we've been given. So just wanted to pass that along and we will continue that conversation. I will, we'll bring some recommendations to the next meeting to talk about if, if we wanna go ahead and move forward with that, so. Sorry, is there any thoughts or comments on that?
Jim, I, I have given this a little bit of thought. And, and one of my thoughts is that I think that the communities need to make this, this decision on a metro-wide basis. We can't have some cities in, some cities out, because then you're gonna have families from one community going to the other community who really want to participate in beggars night. And I think, I think that would just create some havoc. So we're either all in or we're all out.
I think that's an excellent point. And, you know, I can certainly convey, convey that to my colleagues, so.
Right. And the other thought I had that in terms of just, you know, passing it out at the door, I would, I would discourage us from just having bowls sitting out where everybody comes in and sticks their hands in it and, and there's no control over that. I think that if you, if we, if we do it, we have to have some, we have to encourage our, our residents that do it to wear a mask, wear gloves, and hand out, hand out individual pieces of candy. No, no bowls where you have lots of little, little hands going into it.
I've, I've heard from two members of my household, and they have indicated that they would like us to require that all candy be held, handed out be king-sized candy.
Well, there you go.
So we'll make that as part of our regulations.
If you could, I, I would, you could, you could go a long way to make, make me a king in the household if you could make that happen there, Jim.
All the more reason to individually pass them out.
Okay, well, anyway, thank you for those comments. And like I say, this is a, this is a discussion that's, it's ongoing. And so we'll, I'll keep you up to date as I find out more information or what others are thinking, so. Just wanted to mention that we do have, we typically have our strategic planning session. We used to do it every year. We switched to every, every other year. This would be the off year or the, the other year that we would have it. And so I'm, I'll reach out to our, the person that had completed our former strategic plan and, and try to get something set up. But that's a great opportunity for us to set our, our goals and strategies for the next couple of years. And so we'll, we'll get that set up or get working on that, so.
Hey, Jim?
Yes?
Are you gonna have the same woman who did it last year for us or the last two years ago?
That was my intent. I thought that Tamara did it.
I thought she was really good. And, and I would also encourage us to look at going back to doing it every year. To be honest, one reason I was okay with going to every other year was because I thought that the previous facilitator, we were, it wasn't quite the value. But I think this other person, the new facilitator, and I'm not, you know, I think does a better job. And so, and I do think that there's a need for us to, to do this process on a, on a more regular basis. So that would, I'd just like to pass that along.
No, I, I appreciate that. And, you know, part of the reason I think we went to every other year, particularly in this past.
other year, particularly in this past time, is that our goals or what we were trying to accomplish were huge. It was the Northwest Area Expansion. It was the Town Center. It was the, the Gateway Project. And so those were multi-year projects that we were, that was really our, our strategic plan of what we're gonna do. So I, I, so I think that's why we, one of the reasons why we decided that we didn't need to do it, um, you know, two years in a row, when probably we were still working on the same things, which obviously we're still working on those things. But, no, I think that's a good point and something we can talk about. Um, as, as I mentioned, um, you know, and we, you know, besides the strategic, strategic plan, we had Tamara, um, help us with that Northwest Fifty-fourth Avenue group when we were talking about the, the road connection between Birchwood Crossing and Northwest Fifty-fourth. And, yeah, she did a great job in, in, uh, leading us to that effort as well. So. So that, that was our plan, really, to reach out to her. And I think there's some value in having some consistency. And this would be the only second time we would use her for this process, so. Okay. I, uh, wanted to, um, mention, um, right now, and, and you guys are aware, we have a, um, a special council meeting scheduled for next Tuesday on the fifteenth, and that relates to a vicious, or excuse me, a dangerous dog declaration. And, uh, we, our dangerous dog process starts out with the, uh, police department investigating, uh, an incident where there might be a dog bite involved. And, and they, the police chief eventually makes a declaration. In this case, he declared the dogs, involves two dogs, but declared the dogs vicious. The, uh, people that, um, uh, own the dogs, um, decided to, um, uh, appeal this police chief's decision. So, and they also hired an attorney to represent them. And so we, um, had the appeal hearing a, a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, that process is I listened to, I look at the information that the police department collected and, and listened to the, um, the people that, uh, had their dog involved and, and make a decision. And, and I, uh, decided that I would, um, also, uh, agree, I agreed with the police chief that the dog should have been declared dangerous. And so the next process is they can, um, uh, appeal to the city council. So they have appealed to the city council. Uh, we will give you a lot more information before next Tuesday, but that's what this has to do with. It's, we really, I think we only are gonna have one item on the agenda, and that is the appeal of the dangerous dog declaration. And, um, we'll provide, again, a lot of information for you all to have prior to that meeting. Um, and then it's council makes the final decision on whether the dogs would be declared dangerous or not. If, uh, the, um, people involved aren't happy with the council's, uh, decision, then they would, their recourse would be to go to the district court. So this, it's just a part of the process. I can only think about one, maybe two times that this has happened where it's gone this far to the city council, but, um, uh, in, in the last, uh, number of years. So it doesn't happen very often, but I just wanted to let you all know what, what precipitated this. And this is a part of our, our ordinance, has been an ordinance for years, as far as, um, being able to, um, appeal the decision of this police chief and the city administrator to the city council. So that's what next Tuesday's meeting is about.
And well, uh, Jim, will we be voting on this issue?
I don't, you will be hearing the issue, and then we have five days after you all listen to the issue to determine whether you uphold the decision of the police chief and the city administrator, or whether you, um, don't agree with our decision. And so we have five days to report back. So, um, my understanding in talking with our attorney last week is that we, we probably won't have an actual vote that evening, but you'll listen to the sides who have the opportunity to sort of weigh that out and then, um, give staff direction on, you know, what, what your decision would be.
During the timeframe that this has been going on, where has the dogs been? Where are the dogs now?
Well, right after the, um, the incident, the dogs were taken to Animal Rescue League. They have a, a period where they have to be quarantined after a, a bite incident. And, uh, they actually, I believe they stayed there until the, um, uh, um, appeal to the city administrator and, and when I render my decision. After that, the, if, if the, um, owner follows our guidelines, they can actually bring the dogs home. I, I don't know, and the chief may know, I, I don't know personally whether they brought the dogs home or not, but the last I heard, they were still at Animal Rescue League. But, um, our, our ordinance and, you know, talks about that they have to follow certain guidelines, which includes having some type of a structure to hold the dogs in, um, during that time while they're waiting their next appeal period. Or if they weren't appealing, they'd still have to have that structure to maintain the dogs on the property. So, um, I don't know. Chief, do you have any update on the current status of the dogs?
As of the end of last week, they were still at Animal Rescue League. I made an inquiry this morning with one of our staff members, and they had reached out to Animal Rescue League but not heard back yet. So I never heard at the end of the day if they're still there. Um, the, the attorneys, uh, provided in, in the appeal hearing that he believed that, that the owner could meet the restrictions placed on the animals for chapter fifty-five. Um, so with that, they've had the opportunity, but as far as we know, they have not yet picked up the animals.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to follow up, I guess, in that, I mean, if, if we have to make a decision to either uphold the, the city administrator's decision or overturn it, that would require a formal vote, right, Jim?
Well, I, I, I was, I believe that that was the case, but when we talked with the city attorney last week, he didn't think that, uh, uh, we would make the decision actually at the meeting, that we would have some time to consider what that decision is, and then respond in writing back to the, um, individual what the, what the council, um, decision is. So that's, that was my understanding and.
But would that then require another council meeting within the five days to?
Tim, are you on the line?
He's not, but I am texting him.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm going by what Tim told us last week.
To me, I, I mean, I, I was, I guess what you're saying is we, if we didn't feel like we had enough information that night to make a decision, we wouldn't have to make a decision. But it would seem to me, and I, you know, obviously appreciate the guidance the city attorney would give us, but that we would have to actually either vote to uphold the decision or overturn the decision. Um, and if we have five days, we have five days, but that means we'd have to reconvene at some point, because it's not, there's not enough time. The next council meeting is probably the twenty-first or so. That's beyond the five days, so. Right.
If I may jump in here, um, my understanding was that the, the court, this is kind of like a court of appeals process where, um, there would basically be the, the evaluation of the materials. And, and I think you certainly could make your decision, but the expectation isn't that the council would have to, that there would be a process in which you'd be able to take additional information under review. And then the goal would be to come up with a, a written consensus. If you had to have a dissenting opinion, you could do that. And then take action at the following council meeting just to adopt the formal decision. But that there wouldn't necessarily be the need for the vote right away is, is my understanding.
We will, um, again, as we prepare the information for that meeting, we'll, we'll make sure we have the guidance that the city council needs, um, spelled out by the attorney so we know exactly what, what the result and, and what we're expected to accomplish that evening.
Cindy, do you have the ordinance there right in front of us?
I do. And, and paragraph seven and eight are relate to the appeal to the council.
It's too small for me to read, but if you could send that to us, that would be helpful.
I certainly will.
Okay.
Okay, those were the main items I wanted to discuss. Um, we have a couple other smaller things we'll talk about. We'll just handle those under staff comments at the end of the council meeting. But those are the, uh, three main things I wanted to talk about this evening. And then, um, so I would make sure we have enough time for our closed session. We probably oughta break and go into closed session.
Okay. Second, I just lost my, uh. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a closed session per Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five one J to discuss the purchase of particular real estate only where premature disclosure would be reasonably expected to increase the price. The governmental body would have to pay for that property. Minutes and tape recording of a closed, of a session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved, Evans.
I second Suresh.
Evans and Suresh. Uh, Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
And Cindy, you sent us an email for that, uh, connection, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So let's all go out and see you on the other side.